It says she's Emily, but.
Can we get her name changed?
Yep, I got it.
I'm trying to change my name, but I keep changing positions on the screen.
Yep, I got it. Sorry, didn't realize that was you.
It's me.
Welcome.
Well, good evening and welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening for the Addison Central School District Board Candidate Forum. Tonight's event is sponsored by Rights and Democracy Vermont and the Vermont NEA. I do want to let you know that we are recording tonight's event and just give you an opportunity to turn off your camera if you would like. My name is Jubilee McGill. I am the Vermont co-chair of Rights and Democracy, and I live in Bridgeport with my husband and my three children. They are all in various ACSD schools, and it's very possible they may make some cameo appearances before the evening is through. I too grew up in Middlebury and went to, graduated from our public school system. And I'm also the daughter of a local public school teacher, well, before she retired. So, public schools are really, really important to me, and so I am very happy to be here this evening. Assisting me today with technology and the program is Sophie Bodnar. She is the Leadership Development Coordinator for Rights and Democracy Vermont, as well as Kate Logan, who is their Director of Programming and Policy. They will be monitoring the chat and helping with audience questions this evening. Democracy is a bi-state organization in Vermont and New Hampshire that conducts educational outreach around issues that affect everyday Vermonters. RAD is currently organizing around the Vermont Renew's Policy Framework, specifically around weatherization and food justice. And we are also organizing parents to support and strengthen Vermont's public schools. RAD is partnering with the Vermont NEA to raise awareness around educational justice issues. There is growing support of moving away from property taxes to fund education and moving towards an income tax, which would be more equitable for low and moderate income Vermonters and be simpler for everyone to understand. Together RAD and the Vermont NEA are organizing parents around advancing the community school model as a strategy to improve student outcomes, provide more opportunities for students and residents of the community, and leverage local support to prepare our young people for success in life as responsible citizens. Tonight's forum features school board candidate introductions, a moderated question and answer period, during which candidates will have one minute to respond, time at the end for questions from the audience. Please write your questions in the chat and they will be monitored during the forum. All candidates running for seats on the ACSD Board were invited to participate this evening. Tonight, we will be hearing from five of the six candidates. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves and share why they are running for school board. Sophie will let you know when you have reached your two-minute mark, so please be mindful of your time. First, running to represent Cornwall, we have our incumbent candidate, Conlon.
Good evening. My name is Peter Conlon. I'm from Cornwall, where my wife Mary and I have lived for 30 years. We've raised three kids in the system, who, the last one graduated two years ago, and we're currently foster parents to a student who's at the high school and at the Hanford Career Center. I've been on the ACSD Board for the five years that it's been active. I was the chair for the first four years before stepping down in March, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Negotiations Committee. I'm self-employed. I'm in my third career living here in Addison County. Like many rural Vermonters, you sort of do what you can to stay afloat. I was the reporter and the news editor of the Addison Independent for 15 years, worked in the dairy industry as a labor specialist for 10 years, and I currently am self-employed as a move manager. And I'm also a member of the Vermont House of Representatives, representing six small towns in Addison County. I'm looking forward to returning to the Board if re-elected, really because there's a lot of work to do as we look ahead towards recovery from COVID as we continue to face the challenge of declining enrollment. And then, you know, there are the things that, the everyday things that boards do to really the ship running on course. And I appreciate the ability to be able to talk about this and to have these forums that we've been having. It's been great to see such interest in the Board. Thanks.
Sorry, trouble with my mute button. Next, we have the other candidate for the Cornwall District, Chris Kramer.
I was trying to do the last names to like remind myself the order. So here we go. K is usually more in the middle, but I guess roughly the middle. So I'm Chris Kramer. I am currently co-chair of Friends of Cornwall School. I have a son in second grade at Cornwall School and a daughter who will be in kindergarten next year. I became co-chair when my son, sort of at the end of his kindergarten year, when the, one of the co-chairs asked if I would be interested in joining with her in the following year. So this is, so I've been doing this for a few years now. And of course, that's, that's involved boosting morale and working on community at the school during the pandemic. So we've done, you know, kind of the gamut from the little things to the big things. The first thing we did when we went into lockdown was have a virtual movie night that everybody could join, just to give us a sense that, hey, you know, even if we can't be in the same place, we're here together. But we did bigger things, too. As the numbers dropped over the summer, we were able to have a socially-distanced concert that I helped organize with the school chef in his backyard and raised some money for COVID-related school supplies, adapting and that kind of thing, and a letter-writing campaign that, that raised funds for an additional outdoor tent. I've been following school board issues pretty much since I became co-chair, and I'm interested in bringing some additional perspectives to the process. A lot of things I think we'll talk about tonight. I'd really like to bring kind of all sides together to the conversation and try to work on it constructively. So that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Just that time. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. And next up, we're going to hear from our two Middlebury candidates who are here with us this evening. First up, we will hear from Lindsay Huscock.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Huscock. I live in East Middlebury. I've lived in Vermont for almost 20 years. My son, Henry, is a third grader at Mary Hogan. And I've just been paying attention to the, what's happening in the district, and my son has a long road ahead of him in the public schools. And I just, I was looking for something that I was passionate about to devote some time to, and so this is it. So I'm, I have a background in advocacy and teaching in schools, out of schools, extracurriculars, sort of enrichment programs, in movement, Zumba, trick hooping, all sorts of different things. Bring me into the school. I've done one-on-one support work with special education teams. Professionally, I work at Eastview, and I coordinate community life, transportation, and enhanced services there. So I'm looking forward to learning more about what's happening with the school board and hopefully asking some good questions and contributing to the process. I don't know where I'm at in my two minutes. I don't want to go on, but.
You have 40 seconds left.
Reach out to me if you have questions, you know, after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. And our other Middlebury candidate here with us tonight is Mary Heather Noble.
Hi there. First of all, thank you for having us. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm Mary Heather. I'm a parent, writer, environmental scientist, and community volunteer. I've lived in Middlebury for five and a half years. My husband and I have two kids in the ACSD school system. We have an eighth grader at Mums and a junior at MUHS. Both of our kids were at Mary Hogan School, and during our four years there, I volunteered in the classroom. I served as a reading mentor for Everybody Wins, coached the Mary Hogan Schoolgirls on the Run team, served on the Mesa Parent Organization, and participated as a parent rep for the school's community partnership team. And in 2018, I also served on the Steering Committee for the Board's Facilities Master Planning Process, which was basically assisted the Board in trying to design and implement the very initial public engagement process for the Facilities Master Planning effort. So I'm an environmental scientist by training. I've worked in the regulatory sector and did that for a number of years before I left the field to raise my kids and pursue creative writing. I have, I have an MFA in creative writing, specifically creative nonfiction. I'm an editor for an online literary magazine and have taught and led several creative writing workshops, including therapeutic writing workshops for service users at Women's Safe. The reason I am running is basically my experience in the classroom at Mary Hogan School kind of illuminated for me some of the broad issues that students, our community, are facing. We have students dealing with poverty, with trauma, learning differences, and meeting those needs is always a real challenge in schools.
That's time, Mary Heather. Thank you so much.
Mary, and you will have more time later. And then finally, we're going to hear from Barb Wilson, who is the only candidate in Shoreham.
Hi, everyone. Hope that everyone's doing well this evening. My name is Barbara Wilson. I live in Shoreham. We've lived in Shoreham for just over 12 years now. And my husband and I, you know, made Shoreham our home, and I started a small little farm after retirement from my career. You can often see me at the farmer's market in Middlebury where I sell my goods. I served on the Middlebury Farmer's Market Board for a couple of years, up until about a year ago. I also am currently serving on, newly elected to serve on the Rights and Democracy Board as well. I grew up in a rural community in Portland, Michigan, and grew up on a dairy farm that was struggling. So I have firsthand knowledge what it is like to be a child that is amongst peers where you're the lowest-income child. And to couple, make it worse, I had a mother that had mental health issues and also understand that dynamic as well. And through those experiences, I've also realized, looking back, how the community made such a difference and my ability to move beyond that and ultimately have a successful career. I graduated from Michigan State with a secondary education degree and a mathematics degree, and then later went on to work for a corporation for 37 years, where I managed software developers and financials and the whole nine yards related to a $30 million revenue stream. The reason I'm running for Board is I believe that I can bring that rural voice because I've lived it. And I think it's very. Oh, my gosh.
Sorry to cut you off.
I talk too much.
It's, it's, it's hard to stick to that, to that limit. Thank you, all of you. We are now going to segue to the moderated question and answer segment, during which candidates will each have one minute to offer a response to the question posed. We will be alternating the speaking order to make sure that all candidates get an equal opportunity to answer questions first, second, et cetera. The first question will be answered by Lindsay Huscock. Kate will also be posting these questions in the chat if you want to go back and look. So the first question is, what experience would you bring to the role of school board member that you feel would fit the needs of your district? And you can take it away, Lindsay.
Hi there. I have experience as a parent. I went to a public school myself my entire educational career, and I actually graduated from a public university eventually. I have coached youth sports, volunteered for many organizations, served on a couple Board of Directors. I have a lot of experience in advocacy, and through that, I had a role supporting people with disabilities at, in, during a full legislative session. I'm pretty outspoken and ask, generally ask pretty good questions. And this is something I'm passionate about. I just, you know, a lot of things have led up to this, and my father was on the school board locally, and I just, you know, my family has always been really involved in the community, and I want to continue that tradition, so. That was a lot to offer.
Thank you. Next up, we have Chris, and then Mary will follow.
Great. Thanks. As I mentioned, I'm co-chair right now Friends of Cornwall School, so I've got the sort of direct perspective on what's going on at the school these days, and particularly as we make our way out of the pandemic, what some of the needs and challenges are there, and kind of the pulse on the community here. I've also made some efforts in a crosstown manner to try to kind of get conversations going that share perspectives, not just from Cornwall, but from Middlebury and from other towns. Right before COVID hit, some of you may know there was, there was a letter there around consolidation from Middlebury, and it was, the tone of it was a little rough, but I helped put together a meeting in response to that to try to have a good productive conversation around where to go with things. And I think, you know, a lot of folks from Middlebury came, but a lot of folks from smaller towns also, and we were able to have a really good productive conversation. So that's the kind of thing I'd like to bring.
So next up will be Mary, and Barb is in the wings.
Great, thank you. So I guess what I would bring to the ACSD Board would be board experience, certainly experience working in the public sector. I spent several years working as an environmental regulator at the state level. I would really like to support the Board in improved and enhanced communication, particularly with my skills as a writer. And I have some experience conveying technical information and regulatory information to, you know, sort of just the layperson. Certainly, I've experienced in the classroom as a parent volunteer and as a coach, and have worked with kids across the full socioeconomic spectrum. And I'm a parent of a kid with learning differences, and I have a lot of experience advocating for special education services and have a special place in my heart for families who deal with special struggles, special education struggles. So I think all of those things would help serve the Board. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Next up will be Barb, and to close out this question, will be Peter Conlon.
Great, thank you so much. What I believe I can bring to the Board is, first of all, my background. I think there's a lot to be said. If, in fact, you want to understand how people are feeling and the impact that it may have, that we really need to try to work, walk in their footsteps as well. So having the background that I have will enable me to do that. I also have a very strong teamworking, financial background, have had to make really hard decisions over the years about cost savings and cutting and, and that kind of thing, and the approach that you have to do to make it sustainable and accountable to ensure that we get the results that we have advertised. So I think I can bring a lot to bear based on that experience to ensure that, you know, when we talk about cutting and we, that we have really firm criterion that we're using and measurable criterion to make sure that we get the results that we actually are seeking out to do.
And that's time. Thanks.
Barb, Peter Conlon, take it away.
Thanks. Public school in Vermont is a very big issue in the Conlon family. I'm a product of Vermont Public School System, as my wife is, our three kids are. It's why I first ran for the UD3 Board, which oversees the high school and middle school 15 years ago, and was part of that until we became a unified district. And I think that that brings a lot of experience from the Board perspective. But I'll also echo what Mary Heather talked about in terms of knowing what it's like to have a student who struggles. Our latest venture as being foster parents of a student at the high school has really opened my eyes to what it takes to provide all students from all backgrounds with the services and the education that they need. It's been a very moving experience for us, and it's really helped me learn from what is a sort of a theoretical concept to what it really means with feet on the ground and in the classroom. Thank you.
All of you. For the next question, we're going to be starting with Mary Heather Noble, and Barb Wilson will go second. How can you, as an ACSD school board member, push for a more inclusive atmosphere at the schools and make sure the diversity of students is respected and supported?
Well, thank you. I think it's really important for ACSD to be a welcoming learning commi, community for all students and their families and all educators. And I think that can be demonstrated in a variety of ways. Certainly adopting inclusive and actively anti-racist policies and procedures around how the, around how the district develops and delivers its curriculum, how it governs conduct, how it organizes events and activities, and supports students in our schools. And so really, the things I'm talking about are everyday things like reexamining the policies on, around dress codes and discipline and referral to special services, making sure that we're selecting inclusive academic texts and teaching resources that acknowledge the history of harm caused by discrimination, but also include voices from marginalized groups. I think we need to make sure that we are devoting resources to staff and student training around cultural literacy and respect so that folks can really work toward examining their own biases and assumptions.
That's, that's time. Thanks.
There's a lot more. Thank you.
Mary, go ahead, Barb.
Thank you so much. I really think that inclusion and diversity are really critical focus that we need to embark on as a district and as a state and as a country. If you look at how our country is so divided today, partly, I believe that is a result of us not having, being inclusive and not focused on diversity. Our children need to learn in an environment that recognizes the wealth and the wonderful aspects of have, being part of a diverse society. And I think that would go a long way if, at a very young age, that we were focused on those aspects as opposed to what we've seen happen in our country over the last several years. You know, it's just heart-wrenching, and I believe that's the only way that we're going to get out of the predicament that we are, is to really have folks come together and learn from a young age that, you know, we're all important and we each bring our own gifts, and it doesn't matter, you know, what your background is, what your racial is, what race you are, or, you know, what's your sexual orientation is. It's all, we're all together here, making one big, wonderful community.
Thank you, Barb. I forgot to give you a heads up, Peter, but you are up next, and then you will be followed by Chris.
Thanks. It's kind of hard to top what we just heard. But it's really, it's a, to be more inclusive is an effort that really can never stop. You know, we need to be constantly reevaluating what we do, what we have for policies, what we teach. And, you know, and diversity cuts a lot of different ways, especially in our community. We need to be thinking about socioeconomic diversity in our public schools. That's one of the beauties of the public school system, is that it's a great leveler. And we need to, you know, respect students from all backgrounds as they come to our school. In a sort of more specific way, I've recently been involved in implicit bias training. I think probably mediocre implicit bias training, which I found to be incredibly powerful nonetheless. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a good program for everybody who works at our schools and learns in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will have her followed by Lindsay Huscock.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would echo what everybody's said so far. It's great to hear such sort of widespread support. The one thing, I guess, that comes to mind in addition to what everyone else has said is just the notion of supporting students who are advocating for inclusiveness and diversity. Because I find that this is an area, you know, there are a few areas I, like, for me at least, I think gun control, although I realize there's a range of views on that, and diversity is another, where I just think that very often the best ideas and the best movements that we get come from the student body itself. So things like raising the Black Lives Matter flag is something I would fully support and making sure that student groups are supported and concerns are heard. I absolutely support training and curriculum and all of those other things. I just think that this is an area where students have time and again shown themselves to be real leaders. And I think the more we can do to support that, the better off we'll be.
Great. Thank you so much, Chris. And Lindsay, you can finish out this question.
So pushing for a more inclusive atmosphere. I agree with what everyone's saying about policy and what Chris is saying about the student leaders, also staff, that, you know, much of this is very individualized. And I would want to see policy put into practice and just go beyond the policy. You know, and it's about the programs, bullying, anti-bullying programs, and having one-on-one and other support staff available to support the people who really are needing that extra understanding of how to, how to be included, you know? So divide, designing programs that cater to different learning styles and take into account sensory needs, having the tools available so that those things can be a reality. You know, curriculum development and the staff are the experts on that. ESL and outreach. So, for example, if somebody whose family only speaks Chinese is invited to a birthday party, that they're able to access that invitation, you know, be a part of that support for behavioral. Thank you. Lots of ideas.
Thank you, Lindsay. Before we move on to the next question, I just want to remind folks, please, any questions you have, put them in the chat, and we will have time at the end to be able to broach those to our candidates. For the third question, Barb Wilson is going to start us off, followed by Peter Conlon. There is a proposal in the Vermont State Legislature to move public school funding from property tax to income tax. The Tax Commission and the Vermont School Boards Association believe this reform The Tax Commission and the Vermont School Boards Association believe this reform is a more equitable way of funding public, public education. Do you support moving from a property tax to an income tax to fund public education?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I think that our current method of taxation in Vermont is very complicated. In order to take into account different income levels and ability to play pay, we've created a very complex structure, which sometimes I wonder how much does it even cost to administer what we've created? So I think a progressive income tax would be a wonderful way to fund our, our schools. On the same token, I also believe that we need to be fiscally responsible and that we need to make sure that we fully understand the detailed cost implications of the decisions that we make and that we hold ourselves and our administration accountable for those particular results. But I definitely would advocate for income tax base as opposed to a property tax, tax structure.
Great. Thank you very much. We will have Peter Conlin next, followed by Chris Kramer.
Thanks. The short answer is yes. But right now, our current system about a quarter of the $1.9 billion that we spend on K-12 public education is falls in the category that would move to the income tax. The rest is non-residential property tax, sales tax, rooms and meals tax and other taxes. And I think not only would this work well, it would also tie people much more to what their local school budget is. They would, they would sort of see how it affects them much more so than it does now. We do have a complex system. Barbara's right. Sometimes with simplicity, however, comes you lose a level of fairness. The system we have now, even that small quarter of it that's paid for by the property tax, about two thirds of the people actually pay that property tax based on income. So really to make that final leap to the income tax shouldn't be that big a leap at all.
Great. Thanks, Peter. Chris, you are up next, followed by Lindsay.
Sure. Yeah. And I pretty much agree, I think, with what's been said so far. I do support the notion of it. I haven't dug into every last detail of the proposal itself, so I'd want to the type that wants to know exactly what it is that we're saying we're going to do. But in, in concept, yes. The one comment that I've heard that actually makes me beyond just sort of simplification potentially interested is my understanding is that with an income-based system beyond just the sort of property slash income hybrid that we have now, that you actually might be able to bring in some additional revenue at the higher end of the spectrum that we kind of miss out on right now. And I think that would be worth doing. I mean, we've got funding challenges in Vermont and we can't solve it all through revenue. But if there is an opportunity there, I absolutely, particularly if it involves, you know, opportunity at the higher income levels, would support that.
Thanks, Chris. Lindsay is up next, followed by Mary Heather.
This is an area where I would have a little bit of a learning curve and I would look forward to knowing more about where the funding does come from and how everything is distributed. I hearing Barb and Peter, you know, the experience that you have with this is really intriguing to me. I don't own property in the district, but, you know, my son goes to school here. I think it would be fair that if I my income were at a high enough level that I would be paying into the system. I wonder about businesses that benefit from the education system where their workers have children going there. If they live in the, you know, in the district or if the, you know, it's feeding these, you know, this great education system is feeding into future people who work there. So this is a great question and I want to learn more about the answers.
Thanks, Lindsay. And Mary Heather, you can go ahead.
You, I, I too would be supportive of doing an income-based tax to support education in Vermont. Again, you know, I think the way we currently fund education, there is this provision for folks to be able to pay their property taxes based on their income as part of this sort of income sensitivity, sensitive sensitivity program. Sorry, stumbling on my words there. So I agree with Peter Conlin that it doesn't seem to be that big of a leap to move toward an income-based formula for that portion of the education fund. Just because there's so many folks who already, already kind of exercised that, that provision. So yeah, I would be supportive of it. And I too, like Lindsay, have lots to learn about the details of education funding in Vermont. But definitely this, this particular issue seems like it makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next question, Peter Conlin will start us off, followed by Chris Kramer. Consolidation has been a big topic this past year. One of the criticisms in the community is a lot of parents feeling like they weren't being heard or being involved. So the next question is, what role do you think parent voices should play in decisions about school reorganization and consolidation? Go ahead, Peter.
Sure. You're absolutely right. It's been a big issue here for the last two or three years. You know, I think parent voices is as important as every other voice that is out there. We all support public education. You know, in the, in the efforts that we've been going through, you know, we've held lots of forums, we've, we've, we've heard a lot of what people have to say. We haven't really moved very quickly, probably to the level that people would like. But I think that, you know, all voices need to be heard. I think we hear, I think we hear from, from a lot of folks, but I think we don't hear from a lot of folks as well. You know, property taxes continue to go up and can be a burden for folks. Opportunity for students, I think people care very much about that at all grade levels. So I think, yeah, it's, it's parent voices as important as everybody else's voice and it's, and it's important, it's an important part of the process. Thank you.
Sure. And as Chris, followed by Lindsay.
Sure. Yeah, I think I would agree with Peter. It has to be both. So when I was looking at this over the summer with my new co-chair, Molly Daly, she and I decided we wanted to do two surveys specifically for the reason that that Peter mentioned, which is you have to hear from, from parents and you have to hear from the town. So we did two. We did one of the school directory. We got an 85% response rate on that. And we did one on Front Porch Forum for the town, which could theoretically overlap, but, but really we got about 100 responses and just from eyeballing it since I'm pretty familiar with the directory, they mostly weren't. And actually, as it came, as it turned out in that survey, there was a lot of support for the school, both among parents where it was around 85%, but also among town residents on Front Porch Forum where it's about 67%. But, but I want to acknowledge that that's within Cornwall. And part of hearing every voice is also hearing what's going on in Middlebury and hearing what's going on in other towns like Bridgeport and other places. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And so we'll have Lindsay, followed by Mary Heather.
So parent voices. I, I, the voices I hear most loudly, you know, I, it's in the paper. You know, you look at the minutes, the superintendent and the board. You know, some people have, have considered it to be kind of an elite board. It's really hard to go to these meetings to listen to the minutes, the amount of time it takes. You hear the consultants, the consultants reports and there is committee work, but that's also really time heavy. So how do these parents' voices get heard? And what about the students and what about the staff? You know, the time of the meetings, the childcare, you know, there's usually not childcare, any type of food involved. It's kind of a shame that early on the process that it wasn't involved more and it's evolved into an adversarial relationship. But the parents are the fabric of the community, you know, raising the future of our community. So I really, you know, I believe that it should be very important along with the, you know, potentially students and staff, you know, just there, I wish it were more balanced.
Lindsay, Mary Heather is next and Barb Wilson will be last on this topic.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I believe that parent voices are a really critical part in the decisions surrounding our facilities, master planning, any school reorganization or consolidation. And I, I do think that we can do a better job trying to incorporate those voices into the process. The current communication structure is really formal and pretty rigid and kind of cumbersome. And it's difficult to really tease out and access those other voices in the community. But I also agree with Peter that, you know, we need to be talking with educators. We need to be talking with taxpayers. We need to be talking with students because everyone involved here is a stakeholder in the bigger picture. And, and so I think the board really does need to do some work to develop a communication strategy to really try to, you know, take a multi-pronged approach to access those voices and then incorporate those voices into the process. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Heather. Barb?
Sorry, couldn't find my mute. I go between touchscreen and not. Yes, I fully support that and advocate that parents' voices are very critical in the process as are other community members such as myself, as well as a taxpayer. But I want to step back a little bit and talk about communication. Communication is much more than allowing people to talk. It's also willing to listen and to incorporate input that you've received and, and not dismiss it and, and try to basically say, well, that's not really valid because it is valid. And I think that's part of the issue that we've seen is that folks have felt as though their voice doesn't matter. And I look across the spectrum at how many hours that people have participated. And there's a lot of frustration out there that it doesn't matter what I say, the decisions I make.
Earlier, I mentioned community schools. Community school movement is one that recognizes that public schools are, you know, the, the biggest assets in our community and recognizes that we can solve multiple issues facing our communities and our towns through this one kind of center. So this next question, public schools are the heart of the community. What services do you think our district's schools should or could offer the community at large? And first up will be Chris Kramer, followed by Lindsay.
Sure. You didn't allude to it directly, but I wondered to believe if you're, if you're thinking at all of the effort that's going on here in Addison County around this issue. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but there is actually a group that's formed to sort of explore what possibilities. And I'm only, I've been, I'm not a few email chains, but I'm not really directly involved in it. But to, to, to explore how school buildings could potentially be used in, in more ways than they are now, whether that be through offering senior services, you know, for anywhere from childcare essentially to senior services. And it may depend, of course, on the school and the town. And it, just to be clear, it's not just Addison Central. It's a group that's looking at all, I would say the three, the sort of the three big Addison districts. And I fully support looking at, at all of those, those possibilities. When I was in college, I worked with an after-school group that also functioned as an ESL group. And I think there's, there's a wide range of options. Thank you.
Chris, we will have Lindsay next, followed by Mary Heather.
So I see the question about, you know, what should the district's schools offer? And, you know, in reality, what are they already offering? What are students already, students and families counting on from the schools? You know, ideally, you know, we're trying to prepare people to contribute their best self to the community. And how does that happen? You have to learn a lot of skills and have the space to do that. And so we have this unique resource that can really enrich a community or it can be, you know, locked away after hours. And then, you know, just the people in the building and the care that they offer, physical, mental, emotional and the social, you know, sort of opportunities that people get at a school. And all of that is happening, you know, students who get, you know, most of their meals from the school already. So you have these practical concerns as well. So, you know, what's already happening? Do we need to do more? Or, you know, how do we sustain what's already going on? So.
Lindsay, Mary Heather's next, followed by Barb.
Hi, yeah, thank you. I, you know, I agree with Lindsay that certainly in ACSD, we, we can already see just the wide range of services that the district provides, especially students and their families from just beyond academic services, but social and emotional supports, mental health, physical health, referrals to programs and social services, food services and those sorts of things. But also, you know, I think the district already does make an effort to connect schools and kids in schools with other resources in the community that can be enriching for them, whether it's museums, whether it's other agencies that provide services for other individuals and groups. I'm thinking specifically of like Project Independence, Everybody Wins, where we're getting intergenerational learning connection. So there's a lot being done and I'm sure we can, we can explore more. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb is next and Peter Conlin will be closing out this subject tonight.
Awesome. When I think of community schools, I think of a partnership of the school with the community. So what a community school might entail for one town or area may be different in another town or area. I think it's really based on the needs that that particular community really has and how they can collaborate. So I think this is a really exciting opportunity for really members of the community to collaborate with members of the school to come up with what would be best for their particular school. But I think of examples that it could be even adult education classes that are offered at night. It could also be a senior center where seniors are actually trained to coach in, in literacy. And maybe, you know, we could pay them. I also think that there's a way to really integrate our social services with our schools to make sure that we integrate that funding and combine that with the school funding, you know, so that we're more whole, holistic when we're dealing with our children.
Barb, and then we will have Peter.
Thanks. And I think you're referring to the community school model, kind of capital C, capital S, which really does exactly that. It tries to integrate services so that a school is more than just providing an education, but it's providing sort of wraparound services to families, getting them involved. And to a certain extent, you know, modern public education is becoming that because schools are the place where if the child shows up, no matter what problems they might have, a school takes them in and provides the services that they need. And I think formalizing that in a way can provide a lot of benefits. It doesn't come without cost, of course. But we need to rethink how much of what we do in schools is really outside of education and how much of it is social service. And in a way, we're already, you know, making a big step forward at that with our high school where we've got a, a health clinic, dental services. And in a way, we're already, you know, making a big step forward at that with our high school where we've got a, a health clinic, dental services. And I think that all schools are going to be needing to, to look at this as schools are called on more and more to provide those essential services for, for all kids.
Peter, um, for this next question, we are going to give you two minutes, um, to answer, um, see some happy faces. Um, so what do you see as the biggest challenge your school district faces right now? And how would you like to address it? We are going to start with Lindsay, followed by Mary Heather.
So, um, you know, the, the big issues right now, you know, what's on the other side of, you know, COVID? And this sixth grade, you know, moved to the middle school, what's facing us all with the budget? This facilities master plan, um, you know, there's, there are a lot of, you know, IB and the implementation of IB. You know, the, the, the numbers, you know, of the, the census of the school. But, you know, this, there's this underlying issue I see. It's like a rift between the community and the board and the direction that we're going in, where there are definitely supporters. But there are so many people who don't agree with this vision and, you know, yet, you know, I know the board has worked really hard to get to where we are. So, but how, you know, how do you, how do you mend this relationship? So as a board member, I see that as a big issue that would be facing us that we could just ignore and we can just forge ahead, you know, like a freight train. But, you know, how do you, how do you take the voices that we're hearing and incorporate them into the process at this stage in the process? And how do we reach out and, and hear the voices that are yet to be heard? You know, all these people that are talking at their table that are, you know, talking with their friends and just deeply passionate about this. Is there a way to, you know, is there a, a will to get, you know, those voices heard? Ripton, you know, you have, we have a whole school that wants to just not even be a part of it anymore, a whole community that has voted to go in that direction. And, um, you know, Waveridge, there were a lot of people supporting that as well. So, you know, how, where do we go from here? Um, we have, you know, just the black and white sort of, you know, the, the hardware and the software. I don't know. There's a, there, I, people have said it's brave to do this. I hadn't thought of it that way, but I guess that's where we're at here. So.
That's time.
Thanks, Lindsay. Uh, Mary Heather will be going next, followed by Barb Wilson.
Thank you. Um, so I think, you know, we, I think the, the board and the district actually have several challenges ahead of us. And I would agree with Lindsay that we have, you know, kind of, sort of fiscal challenges that kind of black and white. And then we also have the sort of interpersonal community challenges. I think one of the challenges that we really need to work on as a board or as a, as a learning community, a broad ACSD learning community is, uh, coming together as a learning community such that, you know, all towns can view a student from any one of the member towns as our student. And I think, um, there's work to be done on that. And, um, really coming together to view one town's problem as a collective problem, whether it's the challenges, uh, for a, a school that is, um, kind of suffering from budget constraints, um, or whether it's a town whose school is vulnerable to consolidation. These are real problems, um, that exist for our district and they need to be viewed as collective problems. So I think one of the first, uh, challenges is really getting on the same page about what the problems are and, and then moving forward with the problem solving. Um, I do think that, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of good work has been done on, on the facilities master planning process, but a lot more work still needs to be done. And, um, and I think that's one of the biggest challenges is finding that point of intersection between financial stability and best practices in education and equity in delivery of, of academic programming, um, and, and working together to find that and, and really doing that in a way that acknowledges the impacts to everybody involved and
That's time.
and moving forward as a, as a, as one learning community. Thank you.
You, Mary Heather. Um, Barb Wilson is next, followed by Peter Conlin.
Thank you. Um, I think as Heather, I mean, Mary Heather Noble has noted, there are many challenges. First of which I think is the pandemic and recovering from that pandemic and making sure that the kids are put on a recovery plan because I know that there's kids that are falling behind and that should be of utmost importance to us as a district. That is on top of, uh, I've been listening in on, um, the education, um, the House and the Senate, um, education committees. And I'm learning about literacy and even prior to the pandemic, we as a state have been declining. And that's a real concern to me, um, but I was excited by some of the testimony that I heard from experts that 95% of our kids can learn to read, um, which I think is really an awesome thing. So to me, that is really critical. And of course, you know, we do have budget issues and we do have to tackle those budget, budget issues. But I believe we have to do it in a holistic way. I, you know, get, and of course I've only been involved for the last little over a year. But it's always focused on the elementary schools. I think we have to step back and look across the spectrum and really understand, you know, really what is the root cause of our issues? And what are the impacts of decisions that we make? By the various steps that we, um, may perform such as social economic impact. It wasn't until I documented the potential impact of combining Shoreham and Bridgeport, which are our two poorest communities of, um, what the social economic impact would be and disparity that that would create, that we now started to talk about that. But that should be right up front.
Thank you, Barb. Um, we are going to hear next from Peter Conlin, followed by Chris Kramer.
Uh, thanks. It's, it's hard to add much new to what we've already heard. Obviously, when we return in the fall, hopefully everybody at school helping our students recover from the lost learning over the past year is going to be paramount. And that's going to require time, um, and energy and, uh, resources. And, and one of the things that we need to tackle, as Barb just mentioned, is literacy. Literacy is a longstanding problem and one that needs to be dealt with quickly and soon. We need to have our kids reading by grade three or they start falling behind. This is, you know, uh, is certainly against the backdrop of funding issues. We are a school district that spends over $19,000 per pupil. Uh, we are high for the state and the state is high for the nation. And a lot of that is driven by, um, the fact that we have had declining enrollment for the past 20, 25 years. We are finally reaching a, a plateau. But, um, when you have sort of high fixed costs in the form of staffing and fixed assets such as buildings, that doesn't leave a lot of wiggle room to, um, find where the, uh, where the savings can be. So that's, that's what's led to this very hard conversation, not just in our district, but in many districts across Vermont. And it, and it's, it represents a real change in our demographics and a real change in how we view what is our community. How we view the town lines that were established in the 1600s versus a, a greater learning community. As Mary Heather mentioned, how we look at all of our kids as part of this district as we have from grade seven through 12, um, since the 50s, when we became a unified district from grade seven through 12. Uh, these are big existential chat headwinds that we're facing. Um, and, you know, they need to be addressed.
That's time.
Thank you.
Peter, um, you're.
Sure, thanks. Um, I agree with a lot of, a lot of what's been said. Certainly substantively, I agree with Lindsay that, um, pandemic recovery, the mom's issue and COVID are, are probably, um, the top three on substance. But I also agree with what folks have been saying, um, about trust and communication. Um, and I think that really goes both ways. So, let me start it from kind of the perspective of, of a small town. Um, you know, I've been confronted, um, since I said I was going to, uh, run for the board about whether I was sufficiently, um, in favor of, uh, defending Cornwall and its continued existence. It's certainly something I'd like to see, um, but I've had to tell people in no uncertain terms that that's not the only objective that I have in running for, for the board. Um, I, I, you know, when I really first started getting involved in these issues, I went and met with a lot of people from Ridport, where I actually used to live, um, and talked to them about some of the challenges that they face. And I, um, alluded to one of the meetings that we had with, uh, folks from Middlebury. And there was another SOS meeting, Save Our Schools meeting that was similar. And hearing concerns from, from those folks, um, really had an impact on me. And I think the more we can do cross-town communication, the better. It also goes both ways. So I think it's really important to focus on transparency and making sure that folks in the small towns, um, feel, uh, like there is trust and sufficient respect. Um, I'll just point to a couple of examples that, that stick out for me. You know, somebody in the comments asked about the Ripton withdrawal. It's a withdrawal. It's not a secession. We need to stop using that word. I appreciate the fact that Peter spoke up at one of the board meetings and said he prefers the word withdrawal. There's no reason to use the word secession. It's not in the statutes. It's a loaded term and it's only there to make people think about it in a certain way. Another example that I, that I have is, is, uh, the idea that, that Ripton will likely be reassigned, uh, to another SU. AOE has said that it's not clear.
We're gonna move on, Chris. Um, we will be returning to the Ripton topic at the end. So you can talk more about that there. Um, I am going to do kind of one more last call for questions. If you have a question of the candidates you really want to get, um, an answer to now is an excellent time to ask that. You can write it right in the chat, um, and we will add it to the list at the end. This is our last question of the moderated portion. Um, we're going to start with Mary Heather Noble, uh, followed by Barb Wilson. How do you see yourself responding when the needs of your school district or the stances of your fellow board members conflict with your own opinions? Um, and we're going to go back to one-minute answers for this question. So, um, you can take it away, Mary Heather.
Sure, thank you. Um, I guess, you know, I feel like in a circumstance like this, uh, I, I would really kind of fall back on, um, you know, kind of research and, and reaching out to stakeholders, um, impacted by whatever issue is, uh, at hand. Certainly, uh, you know, I, I have my own perspective and I have my own biases in my perspective, but I also recognize that I have blind spots in my perspective, right? And that there are other folks who have more experience, knowledge, what have you, to help me kind of flesh out those blind spots. I do, uh, think it's important to, you know, do the research and, um, you know, try to figure out the, the impact, um, to everybody involved. But ultimately, as a board member, you know, your responsibility, uh, lies with the students.
And that's time.
And that's, that's what would drive my decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Heather. Um, we're going to hear from Barb Wilson next, followed by Peter Conlin.
Great. Um, yes, we're going to be, uh, it's a diverse board, so we all bring our own perspectives, our own biases, our own knowledge to the table and that's a good thing. Um, for me, I think it really, it's kind of similar to Mary. It's very much in the data. It's, you know, I, I have an analytical background. I, I really like to drill down on numbers. I like to have really specific criterion for how we're going to make decisions. And I think if we would struggle, take the time now to come up with those criterion, it would then help us to make that decision later on, um, because we all have agreed to the, well, this is a criteria we're going to use. And these are going to be the measurable, measurable results that we're going to hold ourselves accountable to, which would then build trust with the community as well. So it really comes back to instead of how I feel more, what does the data show and, and, and whether it be social, economic or financial.
You, Barb. Um, Peter, you are up next, followed by Chris Kramer.
Well, I think that, um, you know, a board tries to reach a consensus that brings everybody into agreement. But that's not always possible and, um, people should never feel like they can't vote their conscience or how they feel. But I think that, you know, in, in most sort of select board, school board, um, even the legislature, there's a real effort to find compromise and find consensus so that people aren't put in that position where they have to sort of, um, stand outside the, the, the decision. But like I said, you know, it doesn't always happen and, um, sometimes things require divided votes and people making their voices heard. And I think that that's very important. Um, as Barb said, every board's going to be diverse and, and going to bring together a, a bunch of different voices. And that's frankly, the, the beauty of, of bringing different points of view together. It's the ability to find the compromise that's important.
You're up next, um, and Lindsay will, I don't want to answer, um, a question this evening. Thanks.
Sure, sure. Um, I guess I would answer it in two ways. Um, I think on the one hand, it's really important to take the perspectives of, um, others who, who are coming from a different background into account. Um, and make sure you're really listening to what their needs and concerns are and incorporating those. And I, I say that more from my perspective. So if I'm hearing from folks in Middlebury, for example, or in, uh, you know, Ridport or Shoreham, making sure I, I'm really incorporating and understanding what they're saying. At the same time, I think we're in a place right now with the board where consensus is, um, actually a little bit, the pendulum has swung too far in that direction. And we need people on the board who are willing to speak up and say when transparency is an issue uh, and say when things need to be dealt differently than they're, they're, um, they're, they're being approached right now. And that's part of what I would do.
Thank you. Uh, Lindsay, you're up.
So, um, you know, how do you deal with people, you know, with different opinions? You know, I guess first of all, like I, I feel like I'm not, you know, it won't be my job to make my own personal opinion the strongest one in the room, but to really weigh the different interests and listen along the way. You know, I feel like an opinion should be somewhat malleable based upon new information that you get and conversations that you have. And I would hope that, you know, you know, other people have that type of open-minded perspective that it's really hard to argue with people when it's just based on emotion. It's not based on fact at all. But, you know, the fact is that there's some deep-rooted past history and traditions that has to be respected, you know, because that's just part of the way our community is. So, um, you know, there's long and short-term goals and just learning more about the situation to try to come to a common ground
And that's time.
throughout the process, you know, not just at the end during the vote.
Um, so now we are going to do questions from the chat. We only have one two-part question. Um, so we are going to give candidates two, three minutes to answer this question. And it's one that you can volunteer to answer. So if you, um, don't feel like it, it's okay. If you would like to speak to this question, you can just kind of raise your hand and I will call on candidates' hands, um, to them. So this is, uh, a pretty big topic in our area right now. Um, and it's the Ripton, the Ripton's vote, um, and decision that they wanted to leave the school district. So this audience member would like to hear your thoughts of Ripton leaving the district. You think other towns should support the decision? Or is ACSD stronger with Ripton staying? Or is ACSD stronger with Ripken staying with us? So I will start with Wilson, followed by Chris Kramer.
So, you know, one of the things that I think is really important is to respect what a town has voted. I, they have not done this in a haphazard fashion whatsoever. They have really done a lot of research. They have, you know, tried to influence the process. But here is an example of where, you know, voices weren't heard. And they do have some really unique obstacles compared to some of the other schools living up on the mountain in Ripken. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, I drove up there and I was driving on some of the back roads. And it just made me think, oh, this would be really tough. You know, having a kindergarten or first grader head to Mary Hogan or Salisbury. So I really do get their concern. And also, there's a lot of people that want to be involved in their children's education. So by having it further away, it just makes it that much harder for them to participate. It also then will have the adverse effect of children not being able to necessarily always participate in after-school programs because the parent can't necessarily accommodate that happening because of the distance. I really, you know, as I said, I really believe that we should support it. They voted for it. It has minimal impact on our current funding. And, you know, you could say, oh, yeah, well, we could save so much more money if we basically kept them in the pot so that our equalized pupil don't go down, doesn't go down. But that isn't right. That is basically holding them their desires for their children and starting a community-based school hostage to, you know, the district as a whole. And it's really clear from the analysis, they're not the problem. That school is not what's causing us to have the major cost. And so until we really do the due diligence and really understand, and maybe had we done this three years ago, four years ago, as we did merger, really did the level of detail that we needed to as we implemented, you know, good programs like IB, what is the cost of that? And is that what is contributing to this? Not that I'm saying it's wrong, but it could very well be in addition to some decline in enrollment as well as, you know, facilities. But, you know, for these small schools, the facilities costs are there. But, you know, they're not that big compared to, say, what the high school has. So I think we should support them. And, you know, they spoke. And who am I as someone in Shoreham to tell them, no, that you can't do what you desire?
Thank you, Barb. We are going to hear from Chris, followed by Peter, followed by Mary Heather.
Thanks, Tibley. I do support ratifying their decision to withdraw. But I want to be clear that I think they, the folks who've been active there, would say it's a last choice, not a first choice. They, those of you who may not know, gathered folks in Ripken's eight hundred signatures on a petition to amend the articles of incorporation for our district as an alternative to this. At the time, when Peter was chair, the board got a legal opinion that said that petition could be warned to voters or could not. It was up to the board. It was in their purview. The board chose not to warn it. It's understandable. The petition would have given them a veto over school closure. And frankly, in my opinion, that was maybe a little farther than we would want to go as a district. I get that. But rather than look at that effort and say, okay, there's a lot of dissatisfaction there. Maybe we can't do this, but what can we do? It was dismissed, and there was no alternative presented. And so here we are. The towns voted to withdraw. So when Barb talks about incorporating feedback, that's the kind of thing we're talking about. You don't just dismiss an effort that went out and gathered eight hundred signatures. You figure out what can we do in a practical way that addresses that concern so that they will stay in the district and not go with their last resort? Now that we're there, I support it, but I wish we weren't.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Peter Conlin and then Mary Heather.
Thanks. This is obviously a challenging topic, especially as as a member of the board. I think that the folks in Ripken, well, let me say at a baseline, you know, I think that we are a better district when we are all together, growing in the same direction. At this point, the the board has made zero decisions, no votes on on what happens in the future. But I think that the folks in Ripken correctly see that as we sort of continue studying what goes on with our facilities master plan, that their school was on the list of schools likely to close if we chose to shrink our footprint. And they and they took this action. And I don't fault them for it. I wish they hadn't. I wish we were still together. But I think at this point, they've spoken. I think they've spoken with a clear majority of voters, saying, we do not want to be part of the greater learning community. And we respectfully request to to leave. And so therefore, I guess, I reluctantly say, you know, I think that we all can move forward better by allowing them to to go their direction and the district to continue to go its direction.
Thanks, Mary Heather. Go for it.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this. And I think, you know, this is a really, really difficult issue. And I think, I think in some ways, you know, folks in Ripken, particularly those who have organized to petition this withdraw, perhaps don't understand why it's difficult for the other towns. But I think, you know, I think we view Ripken as part of our greater learning community and our greater community in general. And so it does feel a little bit like a breakup. And I think voters really do want to understand what, in fact, they're voting for. And there is a lot of, there is a lot of question about, you know, what what the repercussions are, not just for the remaining members of ACSD, but what does this mean for our district? What does this mean for our larger community? What does this mean for the students of Ripken? And and I think folks really want to understand that before they cast their votes, myself included. I, I do believe that Ripken students are, can be served well by ACSD. And I speak in particular with the perspective as a parent's advocate for a child who has learning differences. And I think the repercussions for students who have needs for services can be tricky. However, I'm not inclined to, you know, want to hold a community hostage, as they say. And I do know that the system that will be put in place will provide for those things. I guess I'm just saddened by the process. And I and I truly hope that all voters are really thinking about the long-term impacts for all students, including future students of Ripken, and really what what education K through twelve is going to look like. So I personally will be supporting the request to withdraw. But I have just trepidations about it because I do think those students could be served well. And I do think this, you know, need to communicate goes goes both ways. And I, I guess I'm saddened by what's happening. But I guess I also do understand that I think Ripken is conveying to the rest of ACSD that they don't believe Ripken is Ripken without its elementary school. And I can respect that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Heather. So now we're going to hear from all of our candidates. One last time, we'll hear, there'll be a minute each for you all to give a closing statement. We're going to start with Peter, followed by Chris.
Well, thank you. I wasn't prepared to make a closing statement. But I really appreciate the the level of conversation, the view, the point of views of the candidates who are running and the interest everybody is showing in the school board. It's been a while since there've been good, strong races, and it's nice to see. There's a lot of work left to be done on the board and what our district is doing and how we're moving forward. I think I bring a lot of experience to the table, having served on the board and just as being a member of the community for the past three decades. I'd like to be able to continue that. I'd like to see the goals that we've set forward to be achieved, achieved in the best possible way. Anyway, I guess, more than anything, I just want to encourage everybody to vote, request an absentee ballot if you feel nervous about going to the town clerk's office, both for this race but for the ACSD budget and all the other things that are up for town meeting day vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, so we'll hear from Chris next, followed by Lindsay.
Great, thank you. You know, sometimes I struggle between trying to incorporate everything I'm hearing on all sides and also incorporating the passion, and I don't mean that as a pat on the back, but the the passion that I feel around these issues. I think you've probably heard that come through in both ways tonight. And the best I can say is I promise to bring both of those things, if elected, to the board. I may waver occasionally, back and forth. Sometimes I get geared up. And sometimes I am really, really just wanting to hear what everybody has to say, and I think you need both. I'll do my best to incorporate both as appropriate on the board. I think we need perspective and passion, and I hope I can bring that to this role. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Lindsay, you are going next, followed by Mary Heather.
I don't really have a closing statement, and I, I meant to raise my hand for that last Ripken question, so I'll use my time to answer that. So I just didn't push the button right. So, you know, I just, what's the actual savings that's going to be achieved with this? You know, with real transportation costs and, you know, how to involve families and the children with, you know, different after-school? And, you know, how to, how to maintain the current involvement? And what will it actually look like with staffing benefits, maintenance of the buildings, you know, elementary versus middle and high school? And the future of the supervisory district structure that they would be a part of? What current shared resources would they be still needing or losing? So and the long-term staff moving to other positions, how would that affect cost savings? So I think it's, we are strong the way we are. But what's our strongest future, not just in like a couple of years? But, you know, I hear chatter about we're hyping one school way down the line, you know? So what is our, you know, immediate future? And then like long-term, ten years, twenty years down the line? So these are, you know, I care about the answers to these questions, and that's why I'm running for the board. So vote for Lindsay and reach out to me if you have questions.
Thanks, Lindsay. We're going to hear from Mary Heather and then Barb.
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I would, I would close with, and I don't have anything exactly prepared except some just chicken scratch notes in front of me. But I do think it's important that the greater learning community really come together to examine the challenges that the district faces and and really acknowledge those challenges. And, you know, I think that the work that's been done by the board so far has demonstrated and uncovered that we have a sustainability issue. Our educational footprint is is larger than what we can afford, and our student enrollment doesn't justify what we spend. And so that's a problem. And how we address that, given how much of our budget is spent on staffing and the sort of fixed cost. Sorry. I just want to wrap it up by just saying, you know, my goal is to support the planning process to find that point of intersection that I talked about before. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mary. Barb, you will be the final one we hear from tonight.
Awesome. Thank you so much. First of all, thank you for moderating this and putting on this forum. I really appreciate it. And and what I'd like to say in closing, I think I have a unique background, having come from a rural background, somewhat vulnerable background. And, you know, what I hope is I can help bridge that gap from a communication perspective. I've also had a lot of experience working with lots of people, in corporations, with teams. So I think I can really help foster better communication and help people realize that there's really more to communication than just letting people talk. It's also reflecting back on what they said and making sure that we collaborate as opposed to what I see happening now. So I really look forward to serving on the board. It's not something I sought out to do, but over this last year, it's a passion that I have is to really make a difference and be a voice for those that feel that they don't have a voice. Thank you very much.
You, Barb, and thank you to all of the candidates and all of the participants for joining us this evening. I'd just like to echo Peter Conlin, you know, get out there and vote. These are really important decisions around the school board, around the school budgets. So please, please get out and vote. They just posted some links in the chat. We hope that all of the parents joining us tonight will sign up to join the Parents United to support and strengthen Vermont's public schools. We have some very cool work going on, some education opportunities. And as always, we hope you support our work and the work of rights and democracy by becoming a member. So good evening, everyone. Have a wonderful rest of the night. And thank you for showing up tonight and show up to vote March second.
Or before.
Or, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night.